Good evening. It is Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is now six P M. And I'd like to call our regular session council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you take the role, please?
Brenham.
Here.
You.
Yes.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston. Teresa. Weaver.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mackey. English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Uh, great. Thank you. Next is our invocation. Councilman Walker, you recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this evening, you know, I have the honor of extending an invitation to a dear friend and also someone who is a pillar of the community uh, in northeast Columbia, and that is uh, the Reverend, and what we call the Rev affectionately, but it's Dr. George Ashford, uh, Junior, who is also the pastor of Journey United Methodist Church. So Rev, if you don't mind, would you come down and give the invocation, please?
Good evening, everyone. Will you bow your heads with me? Gracious God, as we gather tonight, we pray your blessings upon this meeting of our county. God, we pray that you bless all of the discussions and deliberations. God, we pray that you grant clarity and and purpose over all the agenda items. We we especially, Lord, tonight, pray for peace for our county, our city, our state, this world that you've given us. Lord, we just ask that you continue to help each and every one of us do what's best for the common good, to remember those that depend so greatly upon those that are in appointed and elected positions, to uphold the standards that will help all to achieve. Lord, we especially on tonight, thank you for all who worked to make our county a great place to live, all the staff, first responders, healthcare workers, countless others. And again, Lord, we just pray that you make this meeting be productive and fruitful, that as we leave tonight, Lord, we will know that we served in your honor. So in the precious name of Christ Jesus, our Lord, we give thanks and we give praise. Amen.
Thank you, uh, Reverend Ashford, for that word. If everyone would, please stand and join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I wanted to take a moment to recognize a few guests that we have with us this evening. Uh, Judge Simon. Thank you. Judge Strowman. Thank you. And then we have, uh, Colton County Vice Chair, Mr. Philip Taylor. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. And we th- Sorry. Judge Cuff, thank you as well. Sorry, the light didn't hit you back right there, but I know you.
Madam Chair.
And I now if you go ahead, because I got some more people, go ahead.
Okay, but I do want to recognize, um, Councilman Taylor. He's also the president of the South Carolina Association of Black County Officials.
And thank you to, uh, Chief Jenkins for joining us, as well as your rest of your firefighters. Thank you. Next is a presentation of proclamation. A proclamation recognizing October as Fire Prevention Month in Richland County. Recognizing October as Fire Prevention Month in Richland County, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at their greatest risk for fire. Whereas according to the National Fire Protection Association, fire departments in the United States respond to close to three hundred and thirty-seven thousand house fires each year between twenty fourteen and twenty twenty-two. Fifty-nine percent of deaths resulting from those fires happen in homes with no smoke alarms or the alarms did not work. The National Fire Protection Association has found that having working smoke alarms in your home significantly increases the chance of survival in the event of a fire. The Columbia-Richland Fire Department responded to five hundred and twenty-two structured fires over the course of twenty twenty-three, and the county's fire department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through fire prevention, education. The department's fire education office provided two hundred and eleven fire safety presentations and installed more than five hundred free alarms for the citizens in need over the course of the year in twenty twenty-three. The twenty twenty-four Fire Provincial Month theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, effectively serves to remind the public about the importance of having working smoking alarms in your homes. Now therefore be it resolved that Richland County Council members Jason Branham, Derek Pugh, Paul Livingston, Dawn Weaver, Gretchen Baron, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton do hereby recognize October twenty twenty-four as Fire Prevention Month in Richland County. I encourage all citizens throughout our county to practice fire safety and promote the active involvement of citizens to ensure they have working smoke alarms in their homes. If you would join me in recognizing our, uh, fire department for Fire Prevention Month in Richland County. Chief, if you all would like to come forward and say a few words?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do like to make a note that Councilwoman McBride has also shared her support for this, um, proclamation.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Well, I did not submit my name as well. Please let the record reflect that I also support this. Thank you, Chief.
You're recognized, Chief.
All right. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, co-chair, and to this council, to Mr. Brown. Thank you for this opportunity, and and I want to thank you all for just allowing us to come forward because certainly we cannot do this without your all's support, and we really appreciate it. It's great to have this this, uh, this partnership with the state and county to provide this services. And you know, this being Fire Prevention Month, and you spoke it well, um, it does say that smoke alarms make them work for you. And it cannot work for you if you don't have one, so we promote that highly um, this month and throughout the year. And I would just tell you how vibrant your fire department is. This is the, uh, we also received the award for the designation of a fire safe community, and we have gotten this, um, ever since it's been inceptioned. So we just want to say that we thank you all for this this proclamation, and we, uh, hope that we can live up to it and continue to serve you well and just, uh, make you proud of us. So we thank you so much for this.
Colleagues, if you'd join me over at the seal for a photo, please? Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from October first. Ms. English, you recognize?
Thank you. I'd ask for a I just wanted to take a moment and give special thanks for the Hopkins Magistrate's unveiling ceremony. And I want to take my time because I really don't want to leave anyone out. Um, a very special thanks to Special Services for setting up the tents, the chairs for the event, Director Maloney, Dr. Thompson, Operational Services for coordinating, ordering the installation, the sign, the memorial plaque, and a special thanks to Mr. Fred Brown, who just works so diligently with staff. Whatever we asked, he was there, just making sure it got done. Our Communications Office for the programs, for the invitations, the great pictures during the event, our administration, Mr. Brown, Master of Ceremony, Ms. Thompson for coordinating financial, um, for this project. The council's support in recognizing the legacy of Judge Stocker by approving and renaming the magistrate building. I have a personal thank you to all of our magistrates. I want to really thank Judge, um, Ms. Valerie Strowman for when I reached out, you had nothing but great things to say, and just working with you and Judge Simon has been awesome. Also along with Judge Cuff, who I've known forever, and just understanding the devotion and dedication that Judge Stocker had to the Hopkins community, how he was able to serve and just being able to honor him and that community's support. And I want the council to know that there were over probably about two hundred to two hundred and fifty people in attendance for this event, and Chair Mackey, thank you for being there, um, just supporting and everything. But I just really wanted to say thank you to the staff. Thank you for recognizing how important people are in service and just being able to do something to honor their memory and their legacy means so much to me. So thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Next is item five, approval of minutes from October first, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion approved.
Got that.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is the adoption of the Administrator Brown. Do we have?
Uh, I do not, Madam Chair, but the, uh, county attorney has some, uh, request.
Attorney Wright, you recognized?
Yes, Madam Chair. I have one item to add to executive session. Uh, will be added as D, and that's Reese Green versus Richland County pursuant to Code Section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two.
Attorney Wright, would you please repeat that for the record?
Reese Green versus Richland County.
Thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with that addition.
I'll move.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item seven, report of the attorney for executive session items. Attorney Wright, you recognized?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have four matters for executive session. First is legal update Randolph versus Richland County pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two. B is property inquiry, Capital Projects Columbia Place Mall pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two. Uh, C, fire services agreement between the City of Columbia and Richland County pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two. And D, Reese Green versus Richland County, also pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two.
Do any require outside counsel?
No, ma'am.
All right. So per our council rules, all, uh, four items will be taken up at our executive session at the end of the meeting because they do not require outside counsel. Next is item eight, citizens' input for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone sign up this evening?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak for that item?
Next is, uh, item nine, citizens' input must retain the Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone that signed up to speak?
Madam Chair, we have one person signed up to speak, and that is, uh, Mr. Philip Taylor. Mr. Taylor, if you could come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Mackey, members of council, certainly to the administration in Richland County. My name is Philip Taylor, Vice Chairman of Colton County Council. My address is three zero one Simmons Street, Walterboro, South Carolina, two nine four eight-eight. I rise to say thank you. Richland County, you can be proud. Um, we had a request of members of SCOB Co., the South Carolina Coalition of Black County Officials, to host our strategic meeting on October the fifth in Columbia. And your esteemed, honorable colleagues, uh, Ivan McBride, Derek Pugh, and Paul Livingston attended that meeting, but they also championed for Miss Annette Carrillo to help us in the logistic area. So I stand to recognize her for exemplary service to the South Carolina Coalition of Black County Officials. Thank you, Mr. Brown. I also brought some stylus pens for each of you and the administration. I'll share it with the clerk. Thank you, Oliver.
Thank you so much, Councilman Taylor.
Madam Chair?
You recognize, Mr. Pugh?
Uh, I just want to thank Mr. uh, Taylor for his leadership and giving us the opportunity to be a part of such a great strategic meeting. And as I said at the meeting, this is not like college football. Ms. Carrillo is not in the portal, so don't be trying to get in.
Madam Chair.
You recognize, Mr. Brown?
I just have to echo, uh, Mr. Pugh's comments and give a really special thanks, um, to Ms. Carrillo. Um, only thing you have to do is text it, email, or give her a call, and it's done. Thank you.
Yes. Does that conclude all individuals assigned to speak?
Yes, ma'am. That concludes everyone signing up to speak.
Thank you. Next is item ten, report of the county administrator. Administrator Brown, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. I have a few items for you to consider on this evening. The first item under my report, uh, is going to come from the Soil and Water Conservation District. It's their annual report. Uh, and if you would recognize Mr. Kenny Mullis, Madam Chair, uh, he will provide that report. Uh, and that time will be within a lighter timeframe for, um, my report.
Uh, Mulli- There you are. You recognize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's an honor to be before y'all today. Appreciate your time. I'm Kenny Mullis. I'm the Chair of the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District. Next slide, please. Conservation districts are subdivisions of state government which are created in South Carolina and in South Carolina law in nineteen thirty-seven as part of the national response to the Dust Bowl. Next slide. There are four to six conservation districts in South Carolina whose jurisdictions correspond to county boundaries. Districts exist in all fifty states and U.S. territories, and they exist to develop and implement conservation activities within their jurisdictions. Next slide. Here in South Carolina, our conservation districts programs target agricultural producers, teachers, students, and the general public. Next slide. Districts receive financial support from federal, state, and local sources. The Richland District's cash operating budget is approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. We receive fifteen thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, twenty-five thousand from DNR, which ultimately comes through the state legislature, and approximately twenty-seven thousand from grants and donations from individuals and businesses. We're also very grateful to receive in-kind staff support from Richland County. Richland County Council has provided staff support for the conservation district since at least the nineteen seventies, and you're currently supporting our work with two and a half full-time equivalent staff positions in the Richland County Conservation Division. Thank you again. FY twenty-four programs, I'm here tonight to tell you how we have leveraged those staff positions to promote natural resource conservation in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Next slide. In the past year, we hosted four educational events promoting agricultural conservation practices and farm bill programs for farmers and natural resource professionals. Next slide. We also provided low-cost access to a no-till drill which was used to protect soil health on four hundred and thirty-four acres of agricultural land. Next slide. We awarded eight mini-grants totaling seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to support conservation education in local schools. These grants supported projects such as hydroponics, towers, and school gardens. Next slide. During fiscal year twenty-four, we provided fifty-nine conservation programs on topics including soil health, water quality. Sorry, I lost my place. And composting for two thousand, two hundred and forty students in Richland County. Next slide. We hosted a youth poster contest that received entries for fifty-eight students at nine schools. We also co-hosted the South Carolina Envirathon, a program that helps high school students become environmentally conscious, action-oriented adults. We serve as a community adopt-a-stream hub and help local residents monitor and protect water quality. We continued in ministering the Richland County Ag and Art Tour, which was tremendously successful this year. The twenty-four tour attracted more than fifty-three hundred visitors to twenty agricultural tourist sites in Blathwood. We had people continuing from as far away as California. The the tour sites were located in Blathwood, Shapen, Columbia, Eastover, and Hopkins. This program promotes grassroots economic development through agritourism and creates economic opportunities for local farmers and artists. The seed sanctuary program promotes home gardening, food security, and pollinator conservation by providing vegetable herb and wildfire seeds to residents at no cost. We distributed more than eleven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine seed packets through our two physical locations, pop-up events, and mail. While we operate with a small staff and a small budget, our model quality programs promote natural resource conservation here in Richland County as well as across the state, and we and our staff have received numerous recognitions for this work. At this time, I'd like to invite our commissioners, staff, and supporters in the audience to stand. On behalf of our team and Richland County residents impacted by our programs, thank you, Richland County Council. From the bottom of our heart, we appreciate your support for providing staff for our work. The environment, environmental challenges our communities face are more pressing today than ever before. And with your help, the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District can make Richland County a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you for your time.
That was a great PowerPoint. Thank you for the creative use of pictures. Brown, you recognize?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And now that Mr. Mullis has set the, uh, the time speed, I'll try to match his speed, but be concise. Uh, one of the things I want to point out in your packet, I'm looking at page thirty-six, I believe it is, uh, and this is a reference to item A two, uh, where it talks about the independent accountants report. This is a report that we actually have, um, not just this year, but if you look at some of the language in the report, uh, we took the report to understand that this information was internal to the county and could not be shared. Uh, but when we spoke to the, uh, audit company, what they talked about was that we could not use this report for external purposes, but certainly that we could make it public. Uh, and this document reflects the independent audit that is done separate and apart from other financial, uh, audits related to the transportation, sales, and use tax or the penny. Uh, and I'll just point out a a few areas here that I think are important. Uh, first of all, just right in the big opening paragraph, uh, we have examined, this is Marlon Jenkins, of Richland County, South Carolina, is asserting that the county's expenditure is perceived from its local transportation, sales, and use tax in compliance with the requirements of South Carolina Department of Revenue Ruling number twenty-two dash two uh, and the associated laws, uh, relative to its report ending fiscal year June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. Since management of the county is responsible for its assertion, our responsibility is to express an opinion on the county's compliance with the specified requirements associated with the use of its local transportation, sales, and use tax based on the audit, uh, examination. And then if you kind of go down, uh, toward the, I would say, the, uh, fourth or or fifth paragraph, where it talks about, in our opinion, meaning the, uh, audit, says, "In our opinion, the county complied in all material respects with the requirements of the South Carolina Department of Revenue, Revenue Ruling twenty-two dash two, and the South Carolina Code of Laws, Chapter thirty-seven, uh, relating to its expenditure of its local transportation, sales, and use tax for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-three." And why do I bring that up? I share that with you because I know a a number of you have, uh, received questions and have had questions asked as about, you know, how does the county, uh, show its commitment to fiscal responsibility, which is one of our strategic goals as it relates to the transportation, sales, and use tax? And this is just another one of those ways where the county gets an independent audit of its use of the penny, uh, by a, uh, third-party provider, and that provider determines or communicates whether or not, in their opinion, the use of the sales and use tax is in compliance with the revenue ruling. And so again, this is not the first time that we've received this. Um, again, if you if you look at, um, the report, language there says this report is intended solely for the information and use of Richland County, and is not intended to be and should not be used by anyone other than the specified party. But they did say that this is something that we could make a part of our public, uh, record. We just did not realize that at first. So that's why you're getting a chance to see this, uh, but this is something that we have had, uh, previous years as well. Uh, and so I just wanted to let you know that, uh, that is something that you can also help rely on as it relates to the county's fiscal responsibility as it relates to the transportation, sales, and use tax. as it relates to the transportation, sales, and use tax known as the transportation penny. So I thought that was relevant as we have a focus on fiscal responsibility, and this is a document outside of Richland County that communicates that commitment. So, Madam Chair, I will just pause there for a brief moment before I move on to the next item to take any question that you may have or relevant to that information before moving on to item number three.
Madam Chair.
You recognize, Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Brown. Can you say the number of consecutive years that we received a similar report with a similar finding? How many consecutive years?
Since we've-
Since the ruling, now?
Right, so, correct. So since the initial time where we agreed that we would take this process in place, so for the last, what, two years, three years, this is when we've received this report, and it's consistent with what you're seeing here now. So since the revenue ruling, we've gotten an audit every year, and each year it shared this similar information.
Consecutive years?
It would be two or three because it made the revenue ruling, we were we were doing this process, and the revenue ruling came out later. So I think maybe officially it would be two years.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, for that question. Councilman Weaver, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Brown, I was just curious, is there any plan by the administration, excuse me, to put this out to the media showing that we got this clean bill of health? It might be timely with the vote coming up November 5th.
So it wasn't, that's a great question. The the information that we're sharing with you was to let you know as the policymaking body what the work of your staff is. It wasn't so much to try to show the media or it's to inform the public in general of the responsibility that this council has taken through its staff to be responsible to the expenditures of the penny program. So if the media chose to utilize this information as a part of the council packet, they can certainly do that, but it was not necessarily about telling the media. It was about informing the public through its elected body, which is the Richland County Council, about the work that the staff has done to commit to fiscal responsibility through the expenditures of the sales and use tax.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Weaver, for that question. Any other questions or comments related to this? Again, thank you, Mr. Brown, for providing this information and including it in our packet.
Thank you. Item number three, Madam Chair, if you would recognize our Director of Community and Planning Department, Ms. Anethia Williams, she's going to give you a comprehensive plan update, and I believe that can be found beginning on page 37 in your packet.
Director Williams, you recognize?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Anethia Williams, Director of Community Planning and Development. Just want to give you an update-
Director Williams, hold on just a minute. I think they need to turn your mic on.
Okay. I will try to speak up. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Anethia Williams, Director of Community Planning and Development. We're continuing to work on getting the comprehensive plan completed and the process started. The planning team last met last on Thursday, October 3rd, and at that meeting, we finalized any plans, the plans for our engagement strategy, which will include three large public forums during each phase of the project in combination with in-person and virtual meetings to gain public feedback. Where also, we finalized the needs for an advisory committee. The Neill and Planning has made a recommendation that we put together this advisory committee to work with us to advise staff and the consulting team on the best ways to reach the public, the best ways to look at our outreach materials. They'll be reviewing outreach materials. They do not take the place of planning commission. Planning commission will still have the final recommendation to county council, and the county council will make the ultimate vote on the comprehensive plan, but the advisory committee is to look at our outreach materials to tell us the best way to reach out to the community to make sure that anything that we're putting together are clear and concise and able to be understood by the public. And so in your packet, you also have a letter that kind of gives you some guidance on what we're looking for as you consider advisory committee members. The recommendation is that we have a committee of about 12 to 13 people, so we're asking each council member to give us at least one name and an alternate because sometimes the first person may not be able to commit or, for whatever reason, they may not be able to attend a meeting. We'd like to have a diverse group of people, diversity in the sense of longtime residents versus newcomers, people who would like to see different types of growth in the county versus those who may not want to see a lot of growth in the county, business people, residents. So we kind of have a long list of different people that we would recommend that you would present to be on the advisory committee so that we can get that good diverse group and make sure we get the best information out to different people. The thought is that we'll have at least four meetings over the course of the year that we're working on the comprehensive plan. Those meetings will be in-person unless a virtual option is easier for everyone who's on the advisory committee. And we will ask those advisory committee meetings to also attend any public meetings or town hall meetings that you may have in your districts so that they can also hear directly from the public as well. So that will be an extra commitment is asking for them to try to attend some of those meetings as well. We'd like to get some names by the end of this month because we would like to pull everybody together at least before the holiday season starts so we can have initial welcome meeting, introductory meeting with those committee members. We like to do that in the first couple of weeks of November so that we at least get everybody together before the holiday season comes in and things kind of break apart a little bit with people traveling and visiting family. We're also working to develop a website. It'll be a separate website from the county's website, but we'll link to it from our website that have specific information about what is a comprehensive plan, when we'll have public meetings where people can get as much information as they can, and also have the surveys so that people who may not be able to attend a virtual or in-person meeting can still provide feedback through those surveys on the website as well. And we are meeting bi-weekly with the planning team, so our next meeting with them will be this Thursday.
Thank you. Councilwoman Newton, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Williams, and thank you for including the citizens in this way. I think it's really important, and at every meeting I go to, I talk about how very important it is to continue to hear voices in the comprehensive plan. So also, one question. So when I read this, I think that I originally missed that the primary focus is to be advised on outreach, but will you also be asking those citizens for just input in general on the comprehensive plan or is it purely just for them to review materials and talk about outreach?
No, that's a good question. Yes, because we want such a diverse group, we also want to get their thoughts and their feedback as we're working through this process. So as we have the larger public forums or we gather survey information or get information from smaller neighborhood meetings, we'll also be bringing that information back so that while we're gaining from the larger public, we also want to run that through the advisory committee so they can hear what other people are hearing but also get their feedback as well. They'll be a part of the process.
Perfect, thank you, because I would hate to miss that opportunity to get their input. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome. Councilwoman Barron.
Thank you. So Director Williams, thank you for your presentation, and like Ms. Newton stated, I think anytime we can engage and get our, get the residents involved is critically important. But my my question is probably, it's a technical question but maybe not, and that is you've asked each council member to make a recommendation of a name of an individual and an alternate. So my first question is, when we make this recommendation, is is this just that, a recommendation? Or is this person going to indeed be placed on this advisory committee?
The initial, the first person, the first name you give us is the person that we're taking as your recommendation to serve on the committee. So we'll be reaching out to those individuals whose names we receive and asking, giving them the same information we're giving you, asking them to serve. The alternate is if, once we talk to them more, if for some reason they decide they can't serve or circumstances come up and they learn more and decide that they can't be on the advisory committee, we at least have somebody else that we can go to. So I would say the first name that you give us would be the name that we're putting on the committee, and the alternate is just in case that person cannot serve.
Great. So I just wanted to be clear to make sure that we're, as we as we communicate this, that we're communicating that, you know, this is indeed a sure thing, that it could be a commitment that they would want to do versus a recommendation to say you may be chosen.
Right. The the plan is not that you give me two names and then I pick A or B out of the names you give. It's going to be, tell me who is the person you're putting on it, and then the alternate in case that person cannot serve for whatever reason.
Excellent. And then my last question, Madam Chair, is that the individual that we make the recommendation for, are you looking for an individual that lives in the district or could it be a business owner in the district or does it matter?
We're, because we're looking for a diverse group, if it is a business owner in the district who you feel is a good representative for that area to be on the planning, on the advisory committee, then yes, we would take a business owner in the district. They don't have to necessarily live in that district if it's, if their business is in that district and growth in that district will affect them and they can bring feedback to the advisory committee based on the kind of growth and development related to their business.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. You recognize Mr. Livingston?
And I'm saying this not to say, not, because I don't think a committee ought to get too large, but one concern I would have is with one member being selected from each council district, if we end up without the kind of diversity or the makeup of the group in terms of skill set we need and so forth, that would concern me. Would it be possible to consider maybe having like, I don't know, three at-large persons to make, just in case you don't have, you know, individuals who meet that particular criteria? And also, too, you have three individuals looking at the whole big picture and not representing any particular area, I think might be helpful to consider something like that.
Yes, that's definitely something we can take back. The thought with the 12-person committee is just that it's a little bit easier to manage if you have a committee that's about that size, but when we meet on Thursday, that's something else that I can bring up to the consulting team. Also, one of the things that we do realize, if we get five business people nominated from council members, then we may come back to you and say, we've gotten five, we may want to reach out to your alternate just because we've got a heavy load of one type of, one type of representative. So that is something that we've talked about, but I can bring that back that we wanted to ask some at-large members as well.
You mentioned with the advisory committee wanting to get started and possibly have, I guess, a meeting in November, and then you mentioned three large public forums. When do you anticipate the first large public forum would take place?
We don't have a final date for the public forum, but we would like for the advisory committee, if they can meet early in November, first and second week, that we can at least have the first public forum, also early in December before the Christmas holidays. We do want to try to get it done this year if we possibly can. We just don't have a final date yet.
So we're looking for a first kind of kickoff, first meeting to happen this year, so in December, and that would, I guess, still keep us on schedule in the timeframe that we would like to be and not-
Yes, ma'am, for each phase of the project, it would keep us on schedule.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Williams. I believe that concludes all comments.
All right, thank you.
Administrator Brown?
Yes, ma'am. So item A4, the South Carolina Association of Counties Fall Advocacy Meeting. This meeting, we will actually have as a part of the Institute of Government, two of your Richland County members. So you have Council Chair Jessica Mackey, who will be on a panel, as well as myself. And we've been asked to be on this panel specifically as it relates to strategic planning. So wanted you to know, separate and apart from just the general attending the meeting and getting updates from the fall advocacy standpoint, from the general sessions, that as a part of one of the level workshops, the Level 1 Session, Strategic Planning, we will actually be talking about Richland County, talking about the process we went through, sharing with other counties information that they may be able to use as their counties try to get more strategically aligned with how they connect resources, how they connect decisions to how they serve the community. So wanted to take a moment and share that with you so that you will all have an opportunity to be aware of that and know that your counties are being represented in helping others take the next step maybe in their county. So not necessarily your tag team, but certainly Chair Mackey, is there anything you wanted to add just as a part of that?
Oh, I think you covered it well.
Okay. So moving on to general updates, if you noticed in the other document that I showed, you've looked at the date that we received that letter, sometimes we get information and it doesn't make it in time to get into your next packet. So one of the items I'm going to share with you that you were seeing in your next packet, but I want to share with you now because I thought it was just that important, and it again highlights the level of financial responsibility this council and ultimately its staff has. So our county has again received an award related to excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of United States and Canada. And so we just received this notification on October the 11th, so not in time to make it into the packet, but again, we'll provide it in the packet for the next meeting. But I just want to take a moment because I want to read this because you have a lot of staff members who've worked hard, and I want to acknowledge their work through this award. Says, "Congratulations. We are pleased to notify you that your annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023 has met the requirement to be awarded GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The GFOA established the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence Financial Reporting Program in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare annual comprehensive financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. Furthermore, it says the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financing reporting. Congratulations again for having satisfied the high standards of the program." Why do I say that to you? Again, you have a goal. One of your goals is the commitment to fiscal responsibility. You have, again, identified through the work of this council, through the work of the staff, your commitment, and that commitment is being echoed and seen by agencies that look outside to see what level of commitment organizations that are state and local governments, counties, municipalities have related to their financial reporting and their transparency. So that's a big word that we use, and we've had more than one agency talk about Richland County's commitment to transparency and succeeding in achieving that goal. So congratulations to our financial team and all the county employees who feed into the ability to allow that to happen. So I just thought that was important, and I wanted to share that.
Thank you, Administrator Brown. Thank you for sharing, and thank you to the financial team at Richland County. We appreciate all of county administrator and staff's efforts as well as all of my colleagues. I know we have worked hard this year and to really make sure we continue to emphasize transparency and to improve on that transparency, and so this is a strategic goal of ours. And so thank you for the continued efforts and commitments, and thank you, staff. And I look forward to continuing it next year.
Yes, ma'am. The next few items, Madam Chair, members of council, are items under the administrator's nomination, which is 10B. I have four items, and I'll try to be concise. The first item really is a time process where after a period of time passes, it's required for us to come back and do this again. So the Midlands Workforce Development Board, Local Workforce Development and Area Subsequent Designation Petition, this item where we are asking for a motion to authorize the chief elected official of the council, which in this case is the council chair, to sign the designation petition and the corresponding consortium agreement. And if you look at page 51, I just briefly kind of described to you, you know, what this does. So if you look at under number two, where it talks about the structure, it says, "The parties to this agreement concur to an equitable declaration of responsibility, duty, and partnership with regard to the implementation and execution." And then it talks about, "This partnership includes selection of a fiscal agent and administrative entity for the purposes of oversight, management, and operation of adult, dislocated worker, and youth activities, as well as the one-stop delivery system." So in short, this is our participation in this Midlands group, and then it is our designation of our agreement to allow the representative to sign these documents for our participation. So really, at this point, what we're asking is to allow council chair to execute both the petition designation and then the consortium agreement. And if there are any other specific questions, I know we do have someone who is here that can maybe answer those specific questions if you have them. But that is the motion that we're requesting on this evening.
Madam Chair?
You recognize, Ms. Newton?
I move to authorize the Chair for Richland County Council to sign the designation for the Midlands Workforce Development Board, to sign the designation petition, and the corresponding consortium agreement.
Second? A motion is second. Any discussion? Adam Kurt?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
That item does require reconsideration.
Who to reconsider?
Move to reconsider?
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Oh.
Walker? Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Madam Chair, members of council, uh, items, uh, two and three. Um, if you will permit me to, um, I will ask to take them up together and I'll tell you why. Both of these items has been before the body. They are a part of the, um, the process that you ask the magistrate to go through to identify their priorities for the magistrate facilities. The monies were already allocated. They provided you, um, a, uh, priority, a list. These projects are in that priority list that they provided you. And they're, they're, now they're just before you to move forward with the construction of these items. And so the recommendation is for approval, uh, because again, those items have both, uh, cleared the hurdles that you've requested, the funding is there for them to construct these magistrate facilities in the appropriate locations that are designated there. Uh, and so if, uh, if it's okay with you, uh, we could take those items together. If you don't want to do that, we can separate them out and talk about them individually. Uh, but these are not new items. These are items that have been before you, both through committee, uh, and through council from the magistrate's office.
Here.
You recognize, Ms. Brown?
I move for approval for items two and three.
Second.
A motion and second for items two and three. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration?
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
Oh.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Oh.
Walker? Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of council, this is the last item under the administrator's report. Uh, if you would recognize our Director of Human Resource Services, Director Harley. Uh, she will, uh, provide you the update on this item, uh, and staff's recommendation.
Director Harley, you recognize?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to the Honorable County Council. I'm excited to come before you today and discuss what we are presenting regarding our current new employee probationary period. You will be able to find additional details regarding this, um, ask on pages 152 through 154. The very first thing we do want to do is change our policy and have our language aligned with industry best practices. Currently, we use the language of probationary period and oftentimes this can convey a special employment right. So we would like to move and have this changed to introductory period. Our current probationary period is one year. So basically, we're using one year to assess if an employee is a good fit for the organization. Industry standards and best practices are between 90 days and six months. So we're proposing with reducing that one-year period to a six-month timeframe. We're hoping this will help us with recruitment and retention because of course, this will allow us to compete with the private sector. And so you'll find before you our proposal to move to that abbreviated period. The other thing that this will do is align with, um, the strategic goal number six for operational excellence. Last year, we, um, brought before you the opportunity to implement a step plan that was approved. Um, in order to, to be eligible for the step plan, the employee must complete their probationary period. As it currently stands, without reducing our introductory period, so we will have employees actually waiting about 27 months, um, before they're actually getting an increase. So we want to change that and reduce it to six months so that now we'll have more employees become eligible for those annual increases. So if you have any questions, I just want to open it up to you, um, to provide you some feedback and insight on this request.
Thank you, Director Harley. Do we have any comments or questions from the body?
Madam Chair?
You recognize, Ms. Baron?
Thank you, uh, just one quick question, Director Harley. So, uh, this go, this will go into effect providing this body, um, approves it tonight. When will it go in effect?
Um, this will go into effect on November 1st. So starting on October 25th, we're working right now to approve those first step increases that were approved. And so those step increases will be available to employees who were off of probation by July 1st of 2024, which means they had to be hired by July 1st of 2023. Um, so we want to expand that pool and allow more people to be eligible for the step increase. So the change will be effective on November 1st of 2024.
And, and so with that, just to make sure I understood what you said, that, that means that those individuals previously hired would, um, be impacted. So if they, if they weren't, if they were employed prior to whatever date that was you gave, then instead of them now having to wait to the, the, the year period, they would qualify to be in the six-month pool?
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Weaver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, has there been any numbers associated with any kind of budgetary effect of this? I mean, or is the money already budgeted?
Yes.
For, for this change?
ACA Thomas was not able to attend tonight, but the budget has already been allocated for this particular change.
Okay, for the, for the shorter date with the monies in the budget for that?
Yes, the money is in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I want to, um, commend, uh, Director Harley and your staff for continuing to identify these needs or opportunities or gaps in which we can continue to provide benefits to our employees. It helps with recruitment and retention. And as you mentioned, it is tied to strategic plan goal. And I encourage, you know, you to continue to find those things that help to make us a, a better organization and be able to recruit. So thank you to bringing this to our attention.
Absolutely, and you're welcome. And I just want to say thank you to county council, to our administrator and our administration for the support for doing these things. Because we have been able to really put some great benefits and programs in place for our employees. So we appreciate your support and your vision.
I'll entertain a motion?
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Move to reconsider?
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
Oh.
Walker? Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That does conclude my report.
Uh, next is item 11, Report of the Clerk of Council. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On pages 155 and 156 is the proposed 2024, 2025 council meeting dates. Uh, this action, this item is going to require action, uh, of council to approve so that we can publicize the schedule for next year's meetings.
Madam Chair?
You recognize?
Is it, is July 4th a typo?
It is actually July the 1st. It was a typo, however, on the publicized agenda that says July 1st. We are not having a meeting on July the 4th.
No, we're not.
Thank you.
You recognize, Councilman Weaver?
Um, Madam Chair, I'm not sure, is this the time that we propose other dates if we want to make changes?
So yes, sir. So this calendar is a proposed calendar that the clerk is providing and she provided in advance. So yes, if you have any changes, please make those now with a motion so that we can accept for next year.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion that we move the July 1st, being that that's the week of July 4th because that Friday, I believe, is the 4th. Um, so for those of us who do like to leave town on the, the week of the 4th, that's going to kind of impact it. I would propose we move it a week later to July 8th, um, to get us out of July 4th week.
I'll second it for a vote.
Okay, so I heard a motion, your, your, your motion is only to make that change? Or are you accepting the full calendar with that change?
I'm accepting the full calendar with that change to July 8th.
And then I heard a second from Councilman Brenham. Now we have discussion. Madam, uh, Clerk and Administrator Brown, uh, just based on that change, do you see any concern with the rest of the meetings that month?
Madam Chair, no, I don't. I mean, we'll, it, all the other meetings will stay the same. So instead of having the meeting on July the 1st and then we'll move to the following week of July the 8th and keep the other meetings in place.
The only thing that I would say, which is easy for us to do, um, we would have to have our staff just be aware briefing documents wise. You, you, you're going to have a week basically back to back. So you might have a lot of information, uh, in your packets and then you might not have anything in your next packet. So that's the only thing, but that's very doable.
So for everybody, July 4th is on a Friday, July 8th is on a Tuesday, so be back in town. Any further discussion? Dawn better be in town. Apparently not. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
You need reconsideration?
Yes, ma'am.
Move to reconsider?
Motion is second for reconsideration.
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Oh.
Walker? Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do like to also remind, um, no, actually remind, but, um, share that the council have held several, uh, referendum penny town hall meetings. We have had several of them that took place. And in order to continue to educate the public about this upcoming penny referendum, there are other town hall meetings that have been scheduled, so I would like to share that with the public as well. On October the 21st, at 6:00 PM, District 1 and 2 will be holding a town hall meeting at Friars Gate Park. On October the 23rd, District 8 and 9 will be holding a town hall meeting at the R2I2 Conference Center at 6 o'clock. On October the 24th, at 6 o'clock, at Doco Manor, District 2 and 7 will be holding a town hall meeting as well. And on October the 28th, District 10 and 11 are going to hold, uh, town hall meeting at 6 o'clock. The location will be announced on the next meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
What were the districts for, uh, October 23rd?
It's District 8 and 9.
All right, next item is a report of the chair. I do not have anything this evening. Item 13 is approval of consent items.
Uh, move to approve, uh, 13A through G.
Second.
A motion and a second for items 13A, B, C, D, E, F and G. Any discussion?
Sorry, y'all. That's my discussion.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Next is item 14.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Um, do these items need to be reconsidered?
Please.
Uh, move for reconsideration for items? Second. 13A through G? Second.
Motion is second for items 13A through G for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Oh.
Walker? Mackey?
Oh.
English? Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Next is item 14, second reading items, 14A, An Ordinance Authorizing Execution Delivery of an Amendment to the Infrastructure Credit Agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina and Gable Oaks Housing Associates LP and Other Related Matters.
Madam Chair?
You're recognized, Ms. Brown?
I would like to move for a deferral and I would like to at least say why I'm requesting the deferral. This is one of those projects where initiatives that you can be really proud of. It's one that involves law enforcement and involve Gable Community. It involve Columbia City Council, state representatives. It involve this council and we came up with a consensus with, um, for an amendment for the infrastructure credit. And it was one that everybody left not getting everything they wanted, but feeling good about what they had. Gable Oaks Community is one of our communities that had a high crime area. And, uh, it's a high crime area and we've done a lot to improve that community. And as a part of the infrastructure credit agreement, we made, um, some proposals, um, some requirements within that agreement. Um, the amendment has deleted those requirements. And I would like the opportunity to work with the owner and to look at negotiating, um, some requirements back in. And also to look at the overall impact of the agreement. Um, we have not had time, I have not had the time to work and to get additional information, um, um, on this, so I would like to defer until the next meeting, um, in, what is this, no, in November. And then through the second reading, should we get everything done, the third reading will go very smoothly. So I'm requesting the support of this council as they supported us in passing the original agreement to support a deferral. Thank you.
Second.
As we've a motion and a second for deferral until, uh, November 12th? Any discussion?
I have a question.
You're recognized, Ms. Newton.
I'm, I'm happy to support this request. I just have a question about timing. Um, when would third reading be? In December? In November, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved. Motion approved.
Next is item fourteen B. An ordinance authorizing a deed to the city of Columbia to water lines running under and along the dirt road paving project at Summer Haven Drive from Haven Circle to Dead End. Richland County T M S number zero one three one two dash zero two dash zero two and zero three, zero one three one two dash zero three dash zero three and zero four and zero one three one five dash zero one dash zero seven portion thereof.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item fifteen, other items. Fifteen A, fiscal year twenty five District two hospitality tax allocations.
Madam Chair?
You're recognized.
Move to approve items fifteen A, one and two.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Move to reconsider?
The motion and a second reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker? Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. We're now at item sixteen, executive session. This is from the four items above that the attorney reported on for did not require outside counsel. Item seven A, B, C, and D. I entertain a motion to go into executive session for these items.
Okay.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
On executive session.
I entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Madam Chair.
Second.
With a motion and a second, come out of executive session. Madam Clerk.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh. McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Teresa. Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker. Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Please let the record show that council went into executive session to discuss item 7A, B, C, and D, and no action was taken at that time.
Madam Chair.
You recognize Ms. McBride?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the administrator to explore property interests in the site as described in executive session. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk. Ms. McBride, your motion for the property inquiry, it was 7B, is that correct? That's the one that says property inquiry, yes. Yes ma'am. Madam Clerk.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh. McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Oh.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker. Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item 17, motion period. We have a motion from Councilwoman Allison Taratio. 17A, for the purpose of preserving the historical character of the Olympia neighborhood, I move to, within 12 months, create a neighborhood character overlay in tandem with an update to the neighborhood plan for the Olympia neighborhood. During this time, a moratorium on new construction, rezoning, demolition, and substantial rehabilitation. Fifty percent or more of lot area, building square footage, change in use will be in place. Councilwoman Taratio, would you like to speak to this motion before I make a decision?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a kind of a longstanding conversation that we've had with the neighbors in Olympia regarding preserving the historic character of the neighborhood. The city of Columbia has already put in place measures for the properties zone are within the city limits. And so, this has the intention of keeping that historic character in the parts of the neighborhood that are within the unincorporated Richland County areas.
Thank you, Ms. Taratio. I'll send this motion to the Development and Services Committee for further analysis and action. We're-- yes ma'am.
I'd like my name. Thank you.
Ms. Makram, motion accept that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
You're welcome. We're at item 18, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Pugh. McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker. Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.